I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board Trustees Meeting for September 13, 2021. The meeting is called to order at 6:30. Let's rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands its standing in this nation. One nation, united and peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Give me the call to roll, please.
Jan Gaffney, here. Jan Green, here. Elton McVanheen, here. Nancy Moon, here. Marilyn Palmer, here. Ann Rose, here. Priscilla, here. Julie Mary, here.
Thank you. I will accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
Don't move.
Second. There was a tie there.
It was a tie.
It didn't wait.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. If there's any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Now we'll have the call to the public.
Oh, the public does hear.
Our reading market is going very strong. We have sold over $1,800 worth of books since January. And we have about $230 some dollars in donations. So it's very successful so far. We had originally planned to have an indoor regular fall book sale, but because of COVID, we have decided to repeat our successful spring sale and have an outdoor sale in the parking lot on September 25th from 10 to 4:00. And our general membership meeting will be October 21st here in this room at 7:00 P.M.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We will send up a request for good weather.
We do have a weather date the next Saturday, but we're hoping not to have it.
Okay, thank you. Now we will discuss the Philly break.
Oh, it will be.
But without the millage, then everything kind of...
It was a wonderful reading program this summer. Did any of you have a look at it?
Yeah, I went to the animal show and we could just...
Okay, thank you.
You should start the show again.
Okay, so this is our L4029 for the millage rate. The millage was voted in in August of 2014 at 1.25 mils. Last year, the 2020 rate that we levied was 1.1790. For 2021, the maximum that we would be able to levy would be 1.1687. The recommended amount that we will be levying is 1.1525. The reason for the difference between the maximum that we can levy and the amount that we will be levying is because there were improvements to a number of properties. And instead of the property values going up naturally, because property values have gone up, there is a chunk of money that would be improvements based on, or taxes based on improvements that were made. So instead of penalizing those people who made improvements on their properties by raising their taxes, we are rolling the down the millage to 1.1525 for this year in order to make sure that we are not increasing the millage on anyone, or increasing the taxes on anyone. So what would that mean? So what that means is in 2021, the millage was $2,125,886. This year, it will be $2,165,349 collected. You will see an increase because property values did increase, but we would be collecting an additional approximately $39,000. If we were to tax those properties that had improvements made on them, it would be an additional $30,000, but we don't want to collect that money and, as I said, penalize those people who've made improvements to their properties in 2021, or 2020. So, okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
If we roll down to a lower number than absolutely required by Headley, what happens next year?
Excellent question. I'm glad you asked. Okay, so what happens there is that what we would renew in 2022 would be the 1.16... And because it will be voted in August of 2022, it will not be subject to Headley because it would be voted in. They, Headley doesn't roll it down here, that is voted in. So next year, we would be levying 1.1687, and that's what will go on the ballot, and the voters will vote on that number.
Okay.
Okay?
At this time, we will open the public hearing at 6:38. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the fact that we are not levying the total amount that we can, we would like to hear from them. Pending are no one who wishes to speak. Therefore, we will close the public hearing at 6:39. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda today. I will accept a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda. There are eight items. Does anyone wish to discuss any item in particular? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Library Director's Report.
The library hosted multiple successful celebrations in the past few weeks. The summer reading finale on August 14th went really well. The staff will be sharing the details of our summer with the board this evening. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pick their hand and tell you too much about that, let's have them do that. The ceremony in which the Michigan Nursery and Landscaping Association presented the award for civic improvement featuring the library gardens to the Clarkston Farming Garden Club on August 17th was a lovely outdoor event. It was also very well attended. The vote for the best celebration on August 30th was also a fun and successful event that we expanded by sharing goodies and thank you notes with our community partners who may have not been able to attend, such as the fire department and sheriff's substation. Next item, I've been working with the library's labor attorney to better document the library's employee policies and update them to fit with current laws. I received the first draft of the updated manual from the attorney. The board will want to appoint a subcommittee to assist in the review process of this document prior to it being submitted to the board for approval. I've also been working on the draft of the 2022 budget that needs to be approved by the library board prior to the December 31st, 2021. I will be meeting with each department head to review their collection and project needs for the coming year. I would also like to schedule a meeting with the library board staffing committee to work on that piece within the next few weeks. The past few weeks have been dedicated to the selection process and interviews of our new head of children's and teen services. It was important to assure that we were finding somebody who was a good fit with our team and is excited about rebuilding relationships with our community members and partners as we continue to adapt to the evolution of library services due to the pandemic. In terms of collaborations, on September 18th and 19th, the library and Friends of the Library will partner to host a tent of children's crafts at our in the Village. This is a great outreach event that allows us to connect with kids, parents, and other community members who may not be aware of the vast array of programs and services available at CIDL. The event did not take place in 2020, but has been reimagined for this relaunch, and we are excited to be part of that. And then last but not least, after the success of the Gene Outdoor Book Sale, the Friends of the Library have decided to host their Fall Use Book Sale in a similar format. And as Laura pointed out, it will be Saturday, September 25th from 10 to 4:00, and will include the bake sale by the talented folks from the Church of the Resurrection. And the learning date for this is Saturday, October 2nd.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for this record? If not, we'll move to regular business. Number one is the presentation of the Summer Reading Program.
Hello, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some highlights from this summer. I'm Kristy Evert. I do, I'm a programming assistant here in the youth department, and Jamie Claus, our youth librarian. So we're going to share some of these highlights with you. So we had an amazing summer. Thank you, Marilyn, for your positive comments. We had over 1,200 attendees to our various programs. We packed over 500 of the Stuck and Made Bags, which are very popular, very time-consuming. We had over 30 programs and over 500 young patrons registered for summer reading. So by the numbers, it was a success, and definitely by the feedback we enjoyed as well. So this was our slate of family performers, which we had on Monday evenings, which were very popular. We were happy to host almost all of them in person outside. And I think fortunately or unfortunately, you may have gotten a little preview from one of them that had to use some, a plug here, so you had some sounds coming in from the wacky science magic show, but that was a big hit, as well as Rubus the Dufus, and then we had a couple of virtual events as well, all very well-attended and positive feedback from families. And I'll let Jamie tell you about two of our regular weekly programs.
Throughout the summer, we have regular weekly programs, and one of the first ones is Zoo Babies. And so Ms. Stephanie was running that one. Unfortunately, she injured herself, so I stepped in for a couple of them. But she had wonderful themes. She did farm, ocean, pets, things that go, and zoo animals. And one thing I found really cool about that program is that she, oop, she included bounces. I don't know if you know what those are, where babies are in the lap and she bounces them up and down. And then she also includes baby sign language, like this is the sign for E. And so babies and parents, caregivers got to learn a little bit of sign language in addition. Now, unfortunately, we didn't have the best attendance for this program, and I think that is because it was virtual, and kids under two really shouldn't be having too much screen time. So hopefully, next summer, we'll be able to do that one in person, and it will be better attended. But if it, we do have to do virtual again next year, then we'll probably try to pick a different program, so supplement that one. And then we had my preschool pandas. So we had different themes every week again. In the bottom right-hand corner, you can see our Creature Science. And basically, I gave them, the kids, a couple of science experiments to do. This one is an ocean science experiment where they had to put in a mixture of cocoa powder and oil, pour that into some water, and then try to get rid of the oil with different supplies that I gave them, like spoons, sponges, things like that. So they got to learn how hard it is to get oil out of the ocean. And then Week Two was Animal Action. So I don't think we have a picture of that, but that was our outdoor program, and we had a ton of fun, lots of movement stories, lots of movement songs. And it was just a really great time, very well-attended. And then Week Three was Critter Cafe, and you can kind of see some pretzels over there with the little girl who has, looks like she's eating something. And so the kids made a, kind of like a zoo front for each of their animal crackers that they were given. And then we also made bear spores, so you can kind of see the grime crackers with the marshmallows. They looked kind of like bear faces, so they loved that one, too. And then Week Four was Animal Art. And so we decorated birdhouses. You can see that in the top left. I gave them some paint, and it had a birdhouse that was almost like a puzzle where you put the pieces together. And they enjoyed that one as well. And then we finished off with Wildlife Week. And for Wildlife Week, we had those fun masks. You can see the squirrel and the monkey mask. And then I also, it's not pictured here, but I had animal habitats that I printed out on paper. And then I had little mini animals that I gave the kids where they had to match the animals to their habitat. So overall, it was a really cute and really fun time. And I hope maybe you got to see it on Facebook Live.
Thank you. Okay, so the Happy Hedgehogs was my program for kindergarteners through second grade. And as Jamie said, we rotate through a series of themes each week. So we do science, cooking, art, an active program, and then the theme of the Summer Reading Program, which was Tales and Tales. So these are representative of those themes. We created some hedgehog art out of dried beans, and we, one of the things I told Julie, you know, you look for those silver linings during the challenges of pandemic programming. And one of them is because we're doing virtual programming, we're able to partner with some organizations that normally would not be doing summer reading programs with us. So you see this image here on the computer with a live hedgehog. That was a company called Tiny Tales out of Texas, and they did an amazing live animal program for us. Lots of tiny hats for tiny animals, teaching the kids about the animals and their habitats. And that was overwhelmingly a fan favorite. That was, that kicked off our program. We also did a taco-themed cooking program where we read Dragons Love Tacos and made two different kinds of dessert tacos, which was a big hit. We did art, we did, they were themed after books. So Go Dog Go was our active week, and we did a variety of animal games out on the back lawn in front of the story rock, which was a lot of fun. And we finished with our, our big theme, I'm sorry, the very first, you'll see the top right corner there. So to start off the Summer Reading Program, the kids got their own little animal, stuffed animal, and a little habitat, you see her here in there, that they decorated. Then they got an adoption certificate. That was their reading buddy. So that was meant to accompany them on all their reading challenges throughout the summer. And our last week of programming, we did a celebration of the theme. So we did six stations out back on the lawn there. They had a little animal passport. They visited each of them, had different activities, and then they got a little stuffy at the end. So that was a lot of fun. And we had Sissy, got great volunteers, and we couldn't have done it without them. And it was a very fun, active summer, for sure. So let's go on to our Literary Lines, which is third through fifth grade, Tina Rosso's program. So we've got some great fun here, where they made their own ice cream in a bag. They did a virtual scavenger hunt. They did some diamond painting up in the court. Top corner, which is a big hit with kids, but extremely tedious, challenging prep work for librarians. So Tina was great. She packed 60 of those kits for kids, and they were a big hit. Down here, you'll see one of the last challenges was ugly animal creation. So they got a Styrofoam ball, and then a kit of miscellaneous supplies, and they were to create an ugly animal, and the staff got to vote on them. And in fact, two vote-getters were awarded a certificate to a local toy store in Clarkston. So that was a lot of fun as well. And I have to say, all of the programs for youth always, with the exception of the Zoo Babies, which we said we had some challenges, they are always completely maxed out, the registration and the waiting list. And so all the staff try to accompany our patrons and, or, excuse me, accommodate our patrons as best as possible, and incorporating them into the program or providing access so they can get their supplies and participate as well. So they were very well-received. As was the Teen Summer Reading Program by Elena. So she had 148 attendees over six weeks of program. Almost 200 teens registered for Summer Reading, which, you know, teens can be a little fickle, so that's a fantastic number. She also, so she did, let me just give you a little glimpse of some of her programs here. She did a very popular program, which she's continuing, is the Teen Takeout Boxes. And it looks like a takeout food container. She has a couple of books in there, some snacks, and usually a fun activity. She did some Stuck and Made Crafts. One of those was these light up, you could do a dragon or a fairy garden jar. That was a big hit. She did a virtual game day where, yeah, teenage patrons joined her in a virtual room for online gaming, and a virtual scavenger hunt, which they would complete clues that Elena had created, and everyone who participated got a little goody bag, and then I think a couple winners were selected at random as well. You can also see some of the contestants for her nail-dit competition, where you had to create little mini burger sandwiches, dessert burger buns, and Steph got to vote on those as well. We love sharing our opinions, so lots of fun, and she had great participation all summer long. And I'll let Jamie share our Rainy Neighborhood of Stories program.
What a summer we had. It was so rainy. The first three Neighborhood of Stories were rained out. And luckily, we were able to reschedule two of them for August that were supposed to happen in June. But if you haven't heard of Neighborhood of Stories before, it's our partnership with La Borean Library, where we provide story times in local parks around the area. And it's a lot of fun. This year, we did Camp Iowom, Franchise Park, Went Nature Center, Children's Park, D&amp;D Bowl Park. And you can see us, at the end, we always ended with the alligator song, so you can see us having alligators in the middle there. And we always started with an elephant and piggy book. You can see the pig ears and elephant ears there. And I was even a piggy robot at one point. So it was a lot of fun for everyone. Our best attended was the Nature Center, and we had 80 people there watching our story time. So it was just spectacular numbers. And then last, our grand finale, which I heard some of you attended. We had 366 people overall. We had two animal shows that day. We had five president's union there handing out frisbees. We had Animal Magic, which was presenting our animal show. We had the free car seat safety check. And Bowman Chevrolet was there, too. And then we gave out prize baskets as well that day. So with the car seats, 22 hours of education was provided, there were 11 car seat inspections, and smiles from everyone. So it was just a really fun day, really busy day, but fun. And then we also were able to give out all our prize baskets that day. We had some wonderful baskets. We were able to send about $100 per basket with our sponsorship provided. So we had 36 baskets total, 24 for youth and 12 for teens. And we knew that crafts were really popular in this area, so we had three craft or art baskets. We had a Nerf Fun Fun basket, we have Roblox baskets, animals baskets, games baskets, trucks and trains, and then also all the ones you see here. So we were just, I've heard so many happy comments from parents and kids who won the baskets. And I even had one parent come up to me at the end of the Animal Magic Show and tell me that her child has never been as interested in reading as they were this summer. She was trying to complete all the challenges so she could have as many chances to win those baskets as she could. So it's good to see that our, our prize baskets are working, and our Summer Reading Program's working, and it's getting people reading.
Thank you. So of course, our last page is just a big thank you to our sponsors, our friends, the support of the board and our director through, which she got some hands-on participation this year. It's very little short-staffed, for sure. Literally couldn't do it without the, and the staff of our library, which we did some individual staff. Thank yous at our staff meeting, because it, although it's a youth program, the entire library staff, SERC, Info Desk Staffing, our tech services team, everyone supplies those necessary pieces to make it a successful year, and we did have a very successful year. So thank you for letting us share it with you.
Thank you. And on the part of the board, you warned us out. So we really appreciate all of the effort that goes into the summer programming here at the library. We want to thank all of you because we know it was a challenge.
Thank you.
Sissy, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Always good to have a little fun. We'll move on now to number two, the appointment of a full-time head of children's and teen services.
Okay, at the July 30th meeting, the library board approved the posting of a full-time head of children's and teen services. The position was posted for approximately two weeks, and we received six applications. The selection committee consisted of Marilyn Palmeroy, Elena Jones, and myself. Four candidates were interviewed, and the selection committee narrowed the field to the top two applicants. The second interview asked each candidate to present their strategy for rebuilding the teamwork environment in our youth department after the isolation of COVID. Youth staff was invited to attend the second interviews and ask questions as well. The references of both candidates were contacted, and the selection committee included the youth staff in the final discussion of determining which candidate would be the best fit for our library. The selection committee recommends Stacia Seraphin as the new head of children's and teen services. Stacia has been working at the Manchester District Library, a Class III library, and the Belleville Area District Library, a Class V library. She has a strong background working with children and teens. Working in libraries of two different sizes provides her with both the well-rounded experience of doing it all at a smaller library, as well as the more structured, specialized environment of a larger library. In addition to her library experience, Stacia has worked with a special needs young adult and managed the nursery at her church. Her passion for library service to young people and her upbeat, candid attitude was apparent in both of her interviews. The references also reinforce our impression of her positivity, patience, flexibility, and interest in trying new things. It would make her an asset to our team. This is a budgeted position, and we are recommending that we appoint Stacia Seraphin with a salary of $54,000 a date of hire and $56,000 after an orientation period, which would be the beginning of 2022, and the standard benefits package of a full-time, full-time blade. We do not have a specific date of hire at this point, we're looking at two different possible dates. So if the board would approve that, if the date of hire is determined between the two of us, that would be great.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? The entire program package is included in your packet. Everyone has had a chance to review that, which includes, of course, the salary, also also the retirement plan, and all of that information, the savings program and so forth, for our full-time staff. Are there any questions or comments? I would like to, I would like to commend the committee for interviewing. Applicants are also interviewing to see if we are a good fit for them, to see if our style of our community is the proper place for them to want to work. So trying to get that fit is always the challenge and the adventure. And so we are very pleased to recommend this candidate. And at this time, I'll accept the motion.
Okay, I move that we appoint Stacia Sarafin with a salary of $54,000 a date of hire and $56,000 after an orientation period, approximately January of 2022, and the standard benefits package of a full-time employee with the date of hire that is agreed to contract the candidate and library administration.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Stacia Sarafin as our new head of children's and teen services with a salary of $54,000 at hire and $56,000 after a period of orientation. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. We move, move at this time to the proposal for a public computer replacement.
Why is that nearly as fun? Is there a point about all the stuff they did? I'm just coming here to ask for money. So.
Well, the papers will be out.
That's, that's the idea, yes. As you saw in there, we have a technology plan that rotates around every four years. Each set of equipment gets modified or changed. Due to COVID, that got modified on its own. So because we've got another whole year and a half out of them. Because nobody was using them. But that's beside the point. So we were researching new equipment for the public space and looking at the same number of computers as we had before. We had eight computers in those spaces. And so I went out to several companies that I've done work with in the past and received the bids. And I wrote a comparison, the comparison spreadsheet's in there. The prices were very, very close. We're ice on two of them. The third one was just askew by quite a bit, unfortunately. So I was like, well, okay. So between the two companies, I requested that we go with one of the companies that's actually based in Arizona instead of the one that's based in Quebec for various reasons. One of which is crossing the border on electronics is still difficult. And so I'm trying to hit them as soon as possible. And it's still going to take a while. But that was one of the reasons. They weren't quite below as bitter, but it was really close. So I felt that that was a way to expedite the process. Plus, I've had really good service with this particular company several other times that I've bought equipment from them.
Okay, hopefully, they have all their chips.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm pretty sure it's still going to take a little while, a month or so at least, to get my equipment. But I can now get them because actually the prices have actually come down. When I first was looking a couple of months ago, the prices for these were now at $300 apiece, the same machines. So I'm like, I couldn't justify spending $1,600 apiece on these machines. But they did, the price did drop significantly. So I was like, okay, now we seem to be getting at least out of some of that. So that's a good, that's a good sign.
And given that the prices are comparable, it makes sense to go with the US-based company because of the difficulty of getting.
Imports.
Business services possible.
Right.
Good. Any other questions or bill?
Just out of specificity, I did subtract that out. And there's a $70 difference on the $11,000 project.
Yeah.
Right. If anybody wanted to math.
Right, no, I looked at it and I did the math in my head too. Because, you know, I love those little bits.
Mm-hmm. And that's why I had to, I was like, why am I not choosing the little bit? Well, I have two reasons.
Right, and good reasons, so.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
I make the motion to approve the proposal from GHA Technologies for eight computer terminals with a three-year next business day warranty at a cost of $11,118.
Okay, it's been approved, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the proposal from GHA Technologies for eight computer terminals, three-year next business day warranty add-on at a total cost of $11,118. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the work on researching all of that. Number four, the approval of a resolution setting the 2021 millage rate.
Okay, so just to recap what we went over with the public hearing. In accordance with state law, the library must hold a public hearing each year regarding the millage rate and file an L-4029. Millage rate request forms the county clerk's equalization department and the clerks of the city and the village of Clarkston and in tennis township by September 30th. So library board provided the public hearing to formally state the millage rate that has been voted upon by the residents of the library district and adjustments to that rate due to Headley Amendment and approve a resolution formally accepting the rate. So due to the Headley Amendment, the district library millage of 1.25 that was approved by the voters in the library district on August 5th of 2014 was rolled down to 1.1790 in 2020 and will be rolled down to 1.1687 in 2021. In accordance with truth and taxation, the library is choosing to levy the 1.1525 in 2021. That's the recommendation. And that would be because of those properties that had chosen to make improvements. We are not penalizing, obviously, for the growth in that property value that was because of improvement that was due to the standard broken property value.
Thank you. And that was well explained earlier. All right. Therefore, I will accept a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution setting the millage rate at 1.1525 for 2021.
Do I second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we apply the millage rate of 1.1525 in 2021. Any other comments or questions? If not, please call roll.
Jan Gethnie?
Yes.
Alison McAdie-Huslin?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is approved. The next item is setting the 2022 board meeting schedule. You have your calendars? Calendars are ready.
I brought it.
Excellent, glad to hear it.
Okay, so in January of 2022, we have President's Day on the 17th. You usually like to have your first meeting of the year relatively early so that you can put your officers in place. So I would suggest either the third, well, first of all, we want to stick with Mondays.
Monday, Tuesday sounds good.
And we still like the 30th. Okay.
So Monday, Tuesday, 30?
6 better for you guys?
6:30 is all right. That's the most correct.
You're the working member.
Yeah, I am. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're not the real hang. We'd like to give you time to get here.
I appreciate it.
So the 3rd or the 10th would be early in the month. Other choices would be the 24th or the 31st.
24th, 10th.
10th.
Okay, the 10th?
Seems to be consensus.
It does, well, it does look like there's a tentative exam. It sounds like that's exam week. And I know they do sometimes like to use, I just realized that they do like to use that room for studying for the socially, this is, we don't have much place to study.
I could do the 3rd.
Would the 3rd be okay or is that too close to?
I can't do the 3rd.
Let me see what time she has set for this.
That's the important part. Make 2:30 to 8:30. Other events. So we are looking at the 3rd.
Is the 3rd okay? I would like to be able to accommodate those students during their study week. Sorry, I should have, I didn't see that when I first opened that window. Okay. All right, let's look at February. So in February.
Good thing we get this in before everything gets scheduled.
It is, President's Day is the 21st. Usually you like to hit the middle of the month. Maybe the 14th would be it. Also, the 7th or the 28th.
14 is agreeable. I cannot do the 3rd. I just want to make sure you understood.
Yep, sorry.
But it's okay. Just wanted to make sure because Ken and Ken sounds very similar with the basket. As long as we have a core. Have a good day off. That's okay.
We release you from that response.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm looking at these close dates to make sure that we've got.
So on March 14th, we'll just make sure we're all awake. Because daylight savings is the thing.
Oh, is it? Okay.
March 14th.
Yeah, so March 14th is okay.
Okay.
That looks good. And then in April. Let's see, it looks like Easter Sunday is the 17th. Usually spring break is the first full week of the, maybe the 11th, April 11th?
Sure, sure.
Maybe the, we usually like the middle of the month, maybe the 16th?
Sure.
Okay.
We're playing through.
Well, I would like to be efficient.
What did you say for May?
Uh, May 16th. I'll re-read all of them in a moment too, to recap for the resolution. Let's see, for June. Looks like the last day of school is the 10th. Maybe the 13th.
Sure.
May, middle of the month. July, the 4th is on a Monday. So either the 11th or the 18th of July, I would think. Any preferences either way?
I'd say the 11th.
I like the 11th.
The 11th, okay. August, probably the 8th or the 15th.
15th. The 15th is closer to the middle, which is what we meant.
Yeah, we've been trying to shoot for the middle. Makes it a little easier when we have reports coming from the accountant.
Right.
For her to get those end of month numbers finalized. It helps with getting the statistics pulled together as well. Okay, so August 15th. September 12th, 19th.
Well, the 5th is Labor Day.
The 5th is Labor Day. I just, I have that right in front of me. So the 12th.
12th, okay.
Let's see, October. October 3rd, 10th, 17th.
The 10th is Columbus Day instead of.
We are not close on Columbus Day.
We're not close on that. Almost no one is anymore. No, I don't think so. It's the 10th, 12th, right?
Okay. October 10th. Whoops, not to get November. November 7th, 14th?
14th, good.
Cut. And then December. Like December 12th? Click it middle. Okay. So I have January 3rd, February 14th, March 14th, April 11th, May 16th, June 13th, July 11th, August 15th, September 12th, October 10th, November 14th, December 12th. Sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. This also would need to be done by resolution.
To accept these dates. I'll move that we choose the dates that we've discussed in our board meetings.
Okay, second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the setting of the regular 2022 board meeting schedule as actually decided by us. Please call the roll.
Jan Gethnie?
Yes.
Alison McAdie-Huslin?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your agenda has been set. Number six.
Maybe should have flipped these the other way, but.
Now, the next thing we need to do is set the closure calendar.
Can we do this early to make sure that we get this on the set in your system so that materials are not due on these days? So that people are not being asked to bring material back when the library's not open. So I have put a closure calendar in place. We had discussed duties. I did add that in there. The staffing committee would need to have a discussion about whether or not that would be any kind of a paid day in any way. At this point, it's just a closure day. And that's all I'm presenting at this time, that we would be closed on that day.
Looks like our normal.
It's our standard. There's nothing, there's nothing particularly strange about it. Well, so Christmas is Saturday and Sunday. Municipalities that are already closed on the weekends would probably be closed on Friday and Monday, Thursday weekend. After having been closed so much for COVID, I am not inclined to close any more than necessary. Be open as much as we can so that we're here for people when they need us and want to have us available, so.
Any comments? If that's agreeable, I'll accept a motion.
Move that we approve the closure dates as presented.
Do I second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the closed date calendar as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion is approved. Now, number seven, discussion of Sunday hours.
So at the August meeting, the library board extended the closure of the library on Sundays until a full complement of staff could be hired to assure proper staffing levels. While progress has been made in filling these positions, we are not yet up to full staffing levels. It's the recommendation that the library board revisited this decision at the October 11th meeting with the intention of setting a specific date to remain state Sunday hours at that time. So at this point, our business librarian is starting on the 20th. We do not have a date yet set for this head of adult, uh, head of youth services, I'm sorry. And then we do have some part-time spaces that we need to get filled as well in order to ensure we have appropriate staffing in our service desks. I would suggest revisiting in October and.
Yeah, I think it's better to wait until we know for sure. If we set a date and then can't meet it.
Businesses directly, we are having the same problem. We are really, we're, we're doing pretty well in terms of keeping our circulation desk staff when we post for positions there. People are applying for those positions. In terms of libraries in general, there's a lot of turnover in the library world right now. A lot of the library directors are retiring. And then middle management is moving up, and then some of those entry levels are also moving up. And then there's, it's getting hard to find staffing for, for those part-time and entry level positions. We are struggling with that, like everybody else.
Yeah, sort of reflecting regional.
Not just our profession, it's definitely across the board, although I don't know that we're struggling as much as some businesses are.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
I move that we defer the decision on Sunday opening until next month's meeting. I agree?
Yes.
Okay, there's a, it's been moved and seconded that we discuss Sunday hours at the October eleventh meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And now, I know you're really looking forward to this one. Let's review our snowplow RFP.
Sorry.
Got to be done.
So it is time to bid our snowplowing contract for the 2021-2022 season. I have attached that in your packet. There is nothing different about this than the, than the standard posting that we do every, every year. You will remember that we did not bid out last year because two years ago when we bid it out, after the board accepted the lowest bid and approved the contract, the contractor did come back and offer you an additional year at that same pricing structure. You chose to kick that. So we've been using the same company for two years, but it is time to bid it out again to make sure that we are giving other businesses the opportunity to have that work, so.
When does this need to be in?
So we haven't set a date. Usually Arlene and I work that out in terms of timing, but the goal would be to put the RFP out there and then bring you the, the review of the quotes at the October meeting so that you can choose a contractor because the contract goes from November first through October thirty-first, so.
So October sounds like the best time.
Yeah.
Who does?
Yep.
That's pretty standard. It's not like there's ages that needs to go on to reviewing an RFP for. We don't know what salt is going to cost this year.
We don't know what salt is going to cost.